Announcements this afternoon, starting with District One.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Taylor, representing District One. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the students at Warner Arts Magnet School, who were just inducted into the National Beta Club last week. And so I just wanted to congratulate those students and thank them for being the best students they can possibly be. The other announcement I have is to acknowledge the White's Creek High School Alumni Association. They have a new president, and I just wanted to thank them for their service to White's Creek High School and encourage them to continue on. That is all.
Thank you, District Two.
Thank you so much. This past week, we had at Overton High School the Cluster Evening, where all the schools from District Choose Cluster showed up and watched the basketball game, girls and boys, and learned about Overton, took tours. It was a really great experience. And I wanted to thank Overton publicly for hosting it. It's the second year of hosting Cluster Night for the district. Outside of that, there's several different events that are happening at Overton, and I will let our student board member, if they choose to cover those. Additionally, outside of that, a lot of our elementary schools are having TCAP meetings coming up for parents, and so I encourage you to read your newsletters from your principals and, of course, your PTA/PTO to learn about any other things that are happening as we're starting to wind down on the school year. Thanks.
Thank you, District Three. District Five.
I don't have any announcements. Thank you.
District Six.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just a couple of quick announcements. We are excited to announce the return of the Her Prom Closet Dress Giveaway. It's coming back to Nashville on March 15th, 2025, and it will be held at the Mount Zion Baptist Church on Old Hickory Boulevard. That's at 7594 Old Hickory Boulevard. This is a free event, but registration is required to attend. And this is open to high school juniors and seniors that are looking for prom dresses. You're encouraged to register by texting HPC615 to 33777. And as a reminder, this is a prom dress giveaway for juniors and seniors who are looking to get some really beautiful dresses. I will be onsite to volunteer to help these young people get their dresses. It's a really great opportunity for individuals to get a free prom dress with prom season coming up. So again, that's on March 15th at the Mount Zion Baptist Church on Old Hickory Boulevard. Also, I want to give a shout out to the Franklin Special School District Board of Education for welcoming me to their meeting last night. I was excited to be there and got to witness the tenure vote for 12 teachers that are part of the Franklin Special School District. So I appreciate them inviting me there. And just wanted to share a quick updates. I was, as the Legislative Liaison for Metro Schools, I was, had the privilege of attending the TSBA Legislative and Legal Institute Conference that wrapped up today. And we discussed, among other things, what the legal side of education tech and how AI policies are impacting learning in school districts, how SROs and administration work together to keep schools safe. We talked about legislative updates, and we got an overview of the special legislative session that wrapped up earlier. And we talked specifically about social media and how it impacts board members in school districts and First Amendment challenges related to the use of social media. There are a few things that we need to think through as a Board of Education as far as some policies.
Excuse me, Ms. Mays. Can we go deeper into that during board reports?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will. But those are just some of the updates. But just as a reminder, if you're interested in getting a free dress for prom, that event is happening March 15th.
District Seven, thank you.
There is no, there's no announcements.
District Eight. District Nine.
Yes, just an announcement that James Lawson auditions for Dance Ensemble are February 24th or February 28th. And their theater audition signups will go live on February 21st, and they will actually take place on February 28th. So if you are interested in the dance ensemble or the theater program, now is your time to jump into that. Tonight is the senior night for Lawson's basketball team and their volleyball team. Tipoff for basketball is at 7:30, and volleyball starts at 6:00. And then also just a shout out to 14 talented MNPS high school visual arts students, including students from James Lawson High School, who were selected for the Frist Art Museum's 10th Biennial Young Tennessee Artist Exhibitions. The exhibition is open through March 16th at the Frist, and it has two-dimensional works of art by students enrolled in AP or Advanced Placement Art and International Baccalaureate Studio Art Programs. So if you're by the Frist, I suggest you come out and see some of the great work our art students are doing throughout MNPS.
Thank you, Junior Board Member.
Good evening, everyone. Today was the closing day for the cast of The Insanity of Mary Gerard at John Overton High School, so congratulations to them. Last Friday was Cluster Night, and Saturday we had our Coming Home Dance themed Cupid's Bowl. And at Cluster Night, we beat the McGavick Raiders 77 to 23. So this Monday, we have no days, no school for President's Day, and we also have our Black History Month celebration this week at Overton, and Happy Black History Month to everyone.
Senior Board Member.
Good evening, everyone. I also wanted to say Happy Black History Month. I wanted to congratulate my debate coach, Ms. Clark, for being awarded Tennessee, being awarded Tennessee's 2024 to 2025 Outstanding Speech and Debate Educator. I also wanted to say that debate, or City Championships for Debate is March 1st at MBA. And I created an Instagram for my tutoring program. It's @coherent.tutoring. So if you wanted to check it out, feel free.
Thank you. Back to District Eight.
Sorry, I heard congratulate, and I remembered that I wanted to congratulate the Teacher of the Year for MNPS. I'm sure we'll do a separate congratulations as well, but her name is Natalie Williams, and she is at Percy Priest Elementary in second grade. So really proud of her, and also Dr. Andy Davis, who won a Principal of the Year Award. Thanks. Congratulations to those two wonderful people, among all of the other wonderful people in District Eight and all across MNPS.
And then I'm District Four. I just want to thank MNPS, their leaders, Dr. Battle, her team. We spent the day today with Leadership Donaldson Hermitage, also known as Elevate, which is a group of business leaders in the Donaldson Hermitage in Old Hickory area. They were able to visit elementary, middle, and our high school in the area and learn, learn about and see firsthand what we do with inside MNPS. So I want to thank the principals at Hickman Elementary, Donaldson Middle, and McGavick High School for being gracious hosts, as well as Dr. Battle and her team for also taking the time out to meet with the business leaders and talk with them more about MNPS. I also want to thank Christian Bugs, the CEO of Pencil, for also participating in that event. Thank you so much. If there are no other announcements, we will adjourn announcements.
We'll call this meeting to order. We have a quorum with nine members present and two student board members. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to have Chief Perry. Yes, because your other coworker teammates stood up for you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
There is a motion by Vice Chair Nabah McKinnney. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Could we pull item eight from consent, please?
Yes.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, can we have a motion to approve the agenda with the withdrawing of Action 1B2?
1B8.
Oh, whoops. Excuse me. 1B8. To, motion to approve the agenda with removing 1B8 system integrations from the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. There's a motion and second. Motion by Vice Chair McKinnney, second by Mays, Board Member Mays. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, we approve of the agenda. Now I'll hand over to Dr. Battles for words and recognitions.
All right, thank you so much, Chair Player, and good evening, board members. Tonight we have several outstanding teachers, an award-winning school, and one Hall of Fame alum to celebrate, so I'm gonna jump right in. So it's not easy to win the very highest teaching honor in your field, but tonight we have the privilege of recognizing a teacher who has done it. Natalie Boyd, who has taught math at Hume-Faulk Academic Magnet High School for 11 years, received word from the National Science Foundation on January 13th that the White House has selected her to receive the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Let's give it up for Natalie. This is the highest honor given by the U.S. government specifically for teaching K-12 science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science. And Natalie will receive $10,000 for her outstanding work. Natalie has taught in MNPS for 16 years overall and is known for both challenging and supporting her students as they take on higher forms of mathematical thinking and problem-solving in AP Statistics, honors precalculus, and other classes. She is also part of Hume-Faulk's Instructional Leadership Team and a co-sponsor of the Black Student Union. Natalie, congratulations, and lots of congratulations, but specifically on this amazing recognition of your teaching, and thank you for everything you do for your students. We are so happy to have you here this evening, and we would like to celebrate you one more time and get a quick picture with you and the little ones. Congratulations. So we'd like to get a picture with you, Natalie, and your family, and anybody who's here who is celebrating with you. We'd love for them to join you up front, and board members. He was shooting the webs. All right, congratulations again, Natalie, and thank you for all the great work you can continue to lead at Hume-Faulk. He's independent. All right, so next up, we'd like to recognize John Henderson, one of the greatest football players in MNPS history, and also one of the greatest in college football history. We know this is true because John was recently announced as a member of the 2025 Class of the College Football Hall of Fame. Let's give it up for John. So many of you will know all about John, but he was a powerhouse as a defensive tackle for the University of Tennessee Vols. He won the Outland Trophy as the nation's top interior defensive lineman in 2000, and was a first-team All-American in both 2000 and 2001. He went on to play 10 seasons in the NFL with the Jacksonville Jaguars and the Oakland Raiders, earning two Pro Bowls selections. But we know where he got his start, and that was right here in Nashville at Pearl Cone High School. So John helped lead the Firebirds to the state title in both 1996 and 1997 under Coach Maurice Fitzgerald, who is joining us. He was named Mr. Football Lineman of the Year in 1997 and Tennessee Gatorade Player of the Year for the 1997-98 school year. John and the rest of the 2025 class will be inducted into the College Football Hall of Fame on December 9th in Las Vegas. We'd like to send a loud congratulations to John on this wonderful honor. And I know that Coach Fitzgerald and maybe some family and friends are here to represent John in his absence today, so I asked y'all to come on up, let us celebrate him with you all on his behalf, and we'd like to get a picture. So congratulations to John Henderson. All right, so congratulations again to John Henderson on all the success he's had on and off the field. So next we have Principal Trellany Lane and her team at Isaiah T. Crestwell Middle School of the Arts, which has been named a 2025 School of Excellence by Magnet Schools of America. Let's give it up for Dr. Lane and I.T. Crestwell. Crestwell is a proud, diverse school of the, school that offers fine arts, conservatory classes in theater, visual arts, chorus and piano, band and music appreciation, dance and strings. But it's not just about the arts. Crestwell is known for its drone club, a broadcasting club, and a strong athletics program. This recognition by Magnet Schools of America is a great honor from a national organization that understands Magnet Schools extremely well, and that will be hosting, that will be hosting when it holds its national conference here in April. It's because of schools like I.T. Crestwell that's brought this national conference to Nashville. One of the judges commented, "Isaiah T. Crestwell Middle School has such a rich, inclusive, and enriching magnet program. The intentionality of your program is evident throughout the application. Your staff, students, and families should be very proud of the lifelong impact you're having on the scholars attending your program." So at this time, I'd like for Dr. Trellany Lane and team to come on up, allow us to express congratulations to you all, and thank you for all you do for your students. Sorry, we've got a few of these today. So again, congratulations to I.T. Crestwell, Dr. Lane and team. We greatly appreciate all you all do to prioritize your students. We would also like to extend congratulations to our next group of leaders we're gonna recognize. Our next two groups of honorees have won an award that not many music teachers win. I'm proud to say that Team MNPS won two of the 23 Music for All Advocacy in Action Awards. They were announced recently for the entire nation to recognize effective music education programs and initiatives. First up is McMiddle Band. Have y'all heard of McMiddle Band? I hope you, if you've not, you've heard of them now. So this is a project of four middle school band directors in the McGavick Cluster. The goal of McMiddle Band is to show students they can sit together with kids from other schools and make music, build community, and have a good time doing it. While at the rehearsals, the kids get to know each other and begin to form friendships that will continue to grow as they go into high school. The band grew out of a conversation in 2023 among McGavick Cluster Middle School band directors, who wanted their students to have more opportunities to perform. Last year, they performed a piece that was written just for the group by Dupont Tyler Band Director Scott Miller. And this year, at their band clinic and concert on May 2nd, they'll perform a piece by Adala Spencer, a college student majoring in music composition at Montclair State University, who is an alumnus of our very own Martin Luther King Junior Academic High School. So let's give it up for our four middle school band directors who started McMiddle Band. They are Scott Miller from Dupont Tyler. You don't get to stand back there, you have to come to the front. We want to see you and celebrate you. Amy Salee from Two Rivers. Casey Sanders from Dupont Hatley. And although she's sick and unable to be here tonight, I want to recognize Laura Shepherd from Donaldson Middle School. So as we get ready for our picture, teachers, band directors, thank you for your initiative and for going the extra mile for your students. We, again, we want to celebrate you. We want to support you in every way. We know music matters to our young people. So again, thank you, and keep us posted on all your events and performances that are coming up. Congratulations. All right, congratulations again. So proud of the work happening in our middle schools. And so let's turn our attention to our other Music for All Advocacy in Action Award winner, which is Bryson Finney and the MNPS Visual and Performing Arts Team for their work on the We Are Nashville Festival, an annual event that works to build community through music. Bryson, a music musician who works in MNPS Learning Technology Department, first had this particular dream in 2017. And since then, We Are Nashville has been held annually during Music in Our Schools Month, which takes place every March. Month, which takes place every March. Bryson and his colleagues even pulled together a beautiful video featuring M and P S students, music teachers, and some of Nashville's best classical musicians when the pandemic made it impossible to have the festival in person in 2020. And the video won a Mid-South Emmy Award. And now Bryson and the rest of the team behind our Every Student Known song are nominated for two more Mid-South Emmys that we'll learn more about this weekend. The We Are Nashville Festival brings together students from across the city for a day of workshops, rehearsals, and a big joyful performance. This year's festival is set for March 24th at Seymour Horn Symphony Center, and we know it is going to be a great day of music learning and inspiration for hundreds of our young people. So please help me congratulate Bryson Finney and the Visual and Performing Arts Team. I'm on a job well done, and thank you for representing Nashville Public Schools so well. Come on up. All right, so congratulations again Bryson and to the entire VAPA team. So now we've got one more award winner to talk about tonight that we've decided to make a surprise, and it is one of our very own up here. And that is Christine Tran. Our senior student board member was recently named one of eight finalists from across the country for the Debater of the Year Award from the National. So Christine was, again, recently named one of the eight finalists from across the country for the Debater of the Year Award from the National Association for Urban Debate League. So you didn't think I knew this, did you? Christine, who was a senior at James Lawson High School, joined students from Chicago, Houston, New York City, Silicon Valley, Tulsa, and Washington DC in competing for the award, which will be announced in just a few weeks. So Christine, we are proud of you and can't wait to see where you'll go after you graduate in May. We know there's so much more to come, so congratulations to you. That will conclude our awards and recognitions chair, and at this time, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you for those words and recognition. It's good to have some joy. Now we'll move on to director's report, where we'll have Dr. Battle report on an upcoming topic.
All right, so this evening, we have two separate reports. We'll go through the first one, we'll take Q and A, and then we'll move into the second report this evening. So tonight, I'm pleased to share first an overview of the Education Recovery Scorecard and what it tells us about the progress our students have made in recovering from the academic disruptions of the pandemic. This report, developed through a collaboration between the Center for Education Policy Research at Harvard and the Educational Opportunity Project at Stanford, provides a district-level comparison of learning loss and recovery across the country. As you will see, our students and educators have demonstrated remarkable resilience, and Nashville Public Schools has emerged as a national leader in academic recovery. The data shows that our students' gains in math and reading place us among the top performing large urban districts in the nation, evidence that our focused investments in high-quality instruction, targeted supports, and strategic initiatives are making a real impact. While this progress is encouraging, we know there's still work to be done. The report also reinforces the importance of continuing our commitment to student success through evidence-based strategies, strong instructional leadership, and meaningful engagement with families and the community. So at this time, I'm going to invite up our very own Dr. Paul Changis, who continues to work closely with our Research Assessment and Evaluation Team. He and Director Tina Stinson have been working hard because this report came out at midnight last night, and the embargo was lifted today. So Dr. Changis, I will turn it over to you to walk us through the Education Recovery Scorecard, and as a reminder for board members, this is an updated report from the one we received last spring. Dr. Changis.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. And given that this did come out around midnight, I'm going to be doing just an overview of the main results. But it's good to be back in front of the board to have good news to share.
It's good to have you back.
As Dr. Battle said, this is a collaborative effort between Harvard and Stanford, and they have been looking at the progress that districts have made since prior to the pandemic in 2019 and what has occurred since then. They use 2022 data as their baseline for looking at progress after the pandemic, in part because the 21, 20, the 21 data across the country was somewhat limited from state to state. They are comparing the results in this latest study from 43 states and over 8,700 school districts. In order to do those comparisons, we need a common scale because states give their own assessments, different assessments, different scales. And we'll talk about that in more detail in terms of how that common scale's developed. As I said, this goes back as far as 2019. It looks at the loss that occurred over the next three years and then what's happened since then. And as we'll see in the report, the recovery that's occurred since those times in both reading and mathematics varies quite a bit from state to state. We'll also talk briefly about some of the patterns that we've seen with regard to economic disadvantage. The report goes into much more detail, also looks at racial and economic status, but we are going to be focusing on grades three through eight, reading, and mathematics. Before I go into the actual report, let me just do a brief overview of the recently released NAEP data. As I said, in order to make comparisons, we need a common scale, and the NAEP, National Assessment of Educational Progress, is the only national assessment that's given. The results from the NAEP are typically reported at the state level, not at the district level. A representative sample of districts of students across the state is used in each state to get those results. It's administered in grades four, eight, and 12 every two years in reading, mathematics, and science. The science results have not been released yet, nor have the 12th grade data. But we do have national and state data in this graph from the 2024 assessment, and these charts are comparing the progress that's been made over the last two years. As you can see in here, looking at, on the left side at mathematics, at grades four and eight, the only progress that was made nationally in the last two years was in fourth grade mathematics. And this is on the NAEP scale. They use their own scale scores, and there was a two-point increase over the last two years in mathematics. As you can see, Tennessee made a slightly greater improvement, a three-point improvement in fourth grade math. At eighth grade, the national results were flat, no significant change from 2022, whereas Tennessee made significant progress, a four-point gain. The reading results are not as positive. Nationally, we saw a two-point decline over the last two years at both fourth grade and eighth grade in reading, and Tennessee results were flat. We talk about reading here, but just to be clear, Tennessee, like a lot of states, is assessing reading, language, arts, more than just reading, and so is the NAEP, because the NAEP does measure reading comprehension using both literary and informative text. But again, the results nationally were flat. Tennessee held its own in reading. So let's, I'm going to go into how these scales set without going into a lot of technical detail. But again, the NAEP scale is the one scale that's common across, across the country. So we have different standards in each state, both for proficiency levels, different scale scores, whereas the NAEP has consistent scale scores. They use the proficiency data from each state and basically equate it back to what's happening on the NAEP assessment, using what they, in the third bullet, you'll see proficiency thresholds. That's basically the cut score that defines the NAEP scale. The NAEP has three proficiency levels, basic, proficient, and advanced, and they look at how each state compares on the NAEP and then what their state assessment looks like on their state results versus the NAEP results to do that equating and basically approximate not only where each state is, but where each district is that have enough data to be included in the sample. In the last bullet, they, I'll just, I've been in front of the board a number of times over the years, I generally don't talk about data in terms of grade levels because grade levels can be defined operationally in different ways. Their definition is to look at the national average or 50th percentile in 2019 as being the average for that grade level in reading or in mathematics, and their data is expressed in terms of grade level improvement. So we will use that definition here. So how did Tennessee do overall before we get into the district data? Tennessee results, in the first two bullets apply to what happened basically during the pandemic, while the last two bullets are the recovery that's occurred since then. And Tennessee results are very close to the national average. We lost about a half-grade level from 2019 to 2022 in mathematics, and about a third of a grade level in reading, language, arts. In mathematics, since that time, since 2022, Tennessee's improved by a little over a third of a grade level, 20, 36%. Reading scores have not bounced back quite as much, 14% of a grade level. I'll also note, as is talked about quite a bit in this study, that the results show that there was a significant impact due to economic disadvantage. Students who were disadvantaged within districts, the gaps widened, and districts that had higher percentages of economically disadvantaged students were more greatly impacted by the pandemic, and we saw that with our own data. So Dr. Battle referred to the good news, and this is first, before we get into the national data, these are the districts that are part of the report for the progress that's been made since 2022. These are the math results, and with different bullets representing the districts. The vertical scale is, again, the, the change that's occurred over the last two years in grade levels. The horizontal axis is the percent of students' economic disadvantage or the free reduced price lunch that they use. The, the bluish line that's in here is what we call a regression line, is basically telling us that despite economic disadvantage, the progress that's been made has been pretty flat and actually slightly better for districts with higher disadvantage. You can see in the upper right corner, a big bubble, the bubble size is based on size of district. Nashville Public Schools, Metro Nashville is up near the top statewide over this period of time. If we turn to the data for reading, here we see that the regression line is actually showing that as economic disadvantage increases, there tends to be lower gain on average among Tennessee districts. We, however, still rank among the highest districts in terms of our reading gains over the last two years. In summary, we significantly outpaced the growth of the state. We showed 67% of a grade level increase in mathematics over the last two years. As a reminder, in an earlier slide, we saw that Tennessee was at 36% in comparison. Our reading scores went up 24%, about a quarter of a grade level. The state was up 14% during that time. And now we'll talk about the national context after looking at state results. And here we have the top 10 performing districts out of the 100 largest urban districts in the U.S. for mathematics over the last two years. You can see that we ranked fourth out of 100 large urban districts across the country with growth that was a little over two-thirds of a grade level, .69. At the bottom of this graph, we see the national average, which is shown by a dashed line in blue. Nationally, the increase was only about a tenth of a grade level, .11. Tennessee during that time, .36, about a third of a grade level. So again, we're outpacing not only Tennessee, but the nation in terms of the growth that's occurred. That's mathematics, and if we turn to our reading, language, arts, these are the top 10 of the 100 largest urban districts. We ranked ninth in reading recovery, about a quarter of a grade level increase. You can see the national average actually declined over the last two years in terms of progress. They lost about, about 20%, 19% of a grade level. Tennessee had slight improvement at 13%. We were at 24% improvement. While this study used 2021 as its baseline, I'm sorry, 2022 as its baseline, again, because data was limited from state assessments in 2021. As a reminder, the last time I was in front of the board, two and a half years ago, slightly after my retirement, my semi-retirement, I had good news to share as we looked at our 2022 data relative to the prior year. All that's to say that our bounce back, our recovery started prior to 2022. We actually saw an, over an 8% increase that year in our proficiency in mathematics and over 7% in reading. So as good as our data looks since 2022, I think it would look even better if we had a 21 baseline. In 2022, we also saw that our growth, both for three through eight, reading, language, arts, and mathematics, was above the state average, and as you all are well aware, we've continued to make value-added progress each of those years that surpassed the state. And as we saw earlier, the state is doing a little better than the national average. So again, good news to share. Before I turn this over, the other comment I will make is that we, and this is just a summary, we're the, we're one of five larger urban districts to be in the top 10 among the 100 largest districts in the country for both mathematics and reading, language, arts. And again, this report came out late last night, we'll be digging into it over time. But one of the key findings, again, was that there is an impact due to economic disadvantage that remains persistent, and the data shows that the achievement gaps have actually widened over time and that the highest-income districts have about a four times more likely chance of, of having recovered by this point than districts in the lowest income levels. The federal relief dollars, as studied in, in this report, show that it did mitigate some of that loss, it's, it's had a real impact. But as we know, going forward, and we've made strong progress based on our use of ESAR and Bridge Funds and our initiative alignment, but we're still below the national and state averages in terms of achievement. We're still bouncing back, there's still work to be done, but we need to continue that work. And to discuss how we've accomplished that and how we're going to move forward, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Battle.
Thank you so much, Dr. Changis. It's just always good to have so much expertise and knowledge around our data and around research, how we assess our students, and how we evaluate ourselves up against the information we do have. So one of the most frequent questions, last year, after the first, kind of latest update around the Education Recovery Card came out. around the education recovery card came out, and since this news has been shared with us, one of the first questions was, tell us more about what's happening in and across the district. And so, as you all know, years back, we've been really digging into research-based practices and really evaluating what's helping us accelerate outcomes for our students. And so it's probably no surprise to you that I'm going to go first to our grounding ourselves and our core tenants, being really clear around our focus outcomes, what we expect to see in progress, both in growth and achievement for our students year after year, and then our signature initiatives, just reorienting ourselves to how we come alongside our schools to ensure that they have the support that they need in order to do the great work that they lead every day for all of our students. Which leads us to our GPA experiences, right? We know that they are described as our guaranteed personalized and applied experiences for all of our students as they move through our seamless pathway. We kicked off our Metro Schools Reimagine work back in 2020. As you remember, started out with our fifth grade transition, but has really been grounded in our uniform strategies and our seamless cluster pathways across our district. Being really intentional about the expectations and what we want to realize in our tiered experiences so that we can realize our mantra, our goal of every student being known and every graduate being a ready graduate. We've talked a lot about particularly third grade literacy, where there's been a hyper focus on third grade literacy and that not being something you can just measure and capture in third grade, really going back to birth to three, which is a part of our Grow Together initiative. And that is capped off by our internationally known Academies of Nashville, structure at our high schools, as well as our University of MNPS partnerships. So by way of that, making sure that we have that seamless pathway into college and career. And then as we thought about every, ensuring every student is known, some of those key levers, this is not a complete list, but just some of the key levers that we continue to focus in on and triple down on across the district. The first is not letting up on high-quality tier-one instruction. So when this board adopts budget priorities and we invest, we invest in high-quality instructional materials so that our teachers can do what they do best, right? Really educate and support our students and then providing the necessary professional learning to make sure that they have what they need and that we're day one ready for that instruction. The other is principal leadership. And quite frankly, this should really just say leadership because we've invested highly in leaders across our entire organization to equip and empower all leaders at every levels. And so, yes, our principals are critical to that because our principals are the ones who recruit and support all of our educators within their respective school communities. So when you hear words like the MNPS leadership framework, when you hear words like the leadership playbook, it's all about really setting the expectations for leadership regardless of the seat that anyone sits in across our organization. Our wraparound services and supports, very heavy in our bridge funding, making sure that we can continue those key strategies that were proven successful during the pandemic beyond the pandemic as well. So when you think about our advocacy centers, when you think about counseling mental health supports, nurses in our schools, our navigators, all of those are key strategies as a part of our wraparound support. Our learning acceleration opportunities, primarily our scholars portfolio has been really critical for us as we've continued to double down and ensure that, again, that every student is known and that every student is making progress. As you all know, we've really leveraged our partnership with Vanderbilt University, our peer partnership, to evaluate all of the components around our scholars portfolio so that we can continue to progress, monitor our students' progress over the years given their reading and their math goals. And then lastly, our community engagement and family university. We know that family engagement matters, and so we've been hard at work in creating authentic and explicit opportunities for parents to partner with their teachers, with their principals, counselors, academy coaches, so on and so forth, so that they're truly on a guaranteed path towards success. And so as we think about some of those high-leverage, high-impact strategies, there's just a few, but ones that really rise to the top when we're evaluating and researching what's having really good and positive movement for our students. The best strategy is to have quality leaders in our classrooms and in our schools. That's something we cannot ever skip over. So it's important as we think about strategy moving forward, we continue to support our educators all across the district. So just like last year, what came out of this report, our recommendations from the researchers, of course, CEP is made up of researchers from Harvard and Stanford University. Four items here, states and districts should double down on academic catch-up efforts previously funded by federal relief. So when you think about high doses tutoring, when you think about our scholars portfolio, those are those catch-up efforts that help really complement what's happening in tier-one instruction. Mayors, employers, and other community leaders should join schools and tackle in student absenteeism. What you did not get a chance to see tonight is there's also a complimentary graph around student, reducing chronic absenteeism, of which National Public Schools ranks really high in the progress we've made in reducing chronic absenteeism. You might recall, two years ago, as we were looking at our state designations, we talked specifically about what was, what it was going to take for us to get to the highest category. Right now, we sit in the advancing category, and it was chronic absenteeism. And so we rallied together and across the district and with the community that we needed help in ensuring that our students were in school and that we can then be prepared to meet them where they were. Teachers must inform parents when their child is not at grade level. So when you think about our scholars portfolio and what's happening in promising scholars, again, high doses tutoring, the communications that are there. But one thing that we've really committed to is our personalized student dashboard so that our families have 24/7 access to the personalized student dashboard and are empowered and equipped with that data and that information and the progress that their respective child or children are making. And then the last one is, we must learn what's working and what's not in the recent reforms. This is why our partnership, our signature initiative, again, with Vanderbilt University and our peer partnership and the symposiums we host are so important so that we can learn in real time with our rapid response research, things that we can shift immediately, and then also learn about the things that we need to shift as we're moving forward. But here's the bottom line. These are all foreign action in Nashville Public Schools. And what I want to highlight here is, when you think about the districts who've shown up in the top 10 recovering districts across the country, we are the only school district that's been there multiple years in a row. And so I think that's a testament to our prioritization, our focus around what's translating into positive outcomes for educators and for our students, and is also realizing your priorities for this year as we move forward. So kudos and thank you for that focus and that prioritization that you've already demonstrated. So this slide is really not even needed. How the board can support, we tend to end with a conversation around this is to continue to spread the good news about our district, right? Lots of great things are happening. We know what happens. Sometimes the positive doesn't seep out the way that it should, but it's important for the good news to be told about what our students are accomplishing. To continue to advocate for measurement systems to show how we perform nationally. Before this report, we had a pretty good idea of where we were situated within the state of Tennessee. Now we've got some measure around how we're actually performing and recovering since the pandemic across the country. And then lastly, to continue to advocate for continuity of funding for our priorities, we've been extremely proud of the investments that have been made into our district. We've already moved some of those key strategies into our operational budget. But when ESAR sunset, remember, they were non-recurring funds. So it's important, if those key strategies are yielding results, that we get them into our operating budget. So again, thank you and kudos to the school board, mayor, council for continuing to prioritize the things that are translating into that return on investment on behalf of our students. And then I'll close by just saying thank you to Team MNPS once again. You continue to just lead the way. Our North Star is to become the large premier district in Tennessee and beyond. And I think this data, the NAEP data, as well as the Education Recovery Scorecard data really demonstrates the quality of educators we have, the talents we have in our students, the family engagement and partnership that exists, and of course, the leadership from the board and the entire district. So thank you again to Team MNPS. I will pause for chair and see if there are any questions that we can respond to. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right. Board member Chan, I mean, Trin, sorry.
I just wanted to ask more specifically on the NAEP test itself. Is it something that, like, all students take every year? Because personally, I don't remember taking tests like that. Or is it like scores from the TEN Ready or like map testing? Can you be more specific about that?
Yeah, I'll ask Dr. Changis to respond. We actually received a list of schools that participated. I think we had 28 schools.
We had 28 schools in the 2024 sample. It's, every two years, it's administered in grades four, eight, and 12 in reading, math, and science. It's only a sample from each state. We, we get, they use the demographics of students across the state to get a sample that they feel is representative of state-level data. These students take the same assessment across the country at each grade level and subject. So it is the one assessment that's common across the country. Students get no feedback from this, either do schools or districts that participate. It's only to get the state-level data. The one exception is there are some larger districts that participate in a larger sampling that gets district-level data. With all of the testing that goes on already in Tennessee, TEN Ready scores are separate from the NAEP assessment. I don't think anyone's demanding more testing than I'm aware of.
Thank you. School member, member Wen.
I just have one question regarding the applied portion about GPA experiences. So a concern specifically at Overton and at zone schools has been towards the end of ESAR funding and schools spiraling money about where programs like GEAR Up are going to go, if students are going to be able to have that experience to tour colleges and what the board is doing and what Metro is doing as a whole to make sure that experience is still there for students.
Yeah, so that GEAR Up historically has been funded under grant programs. So it is subject to nonrecurring investments. And so over the years, we've been able to maintain a pretty high level. Every year, there is an assessment around if grants are going to continue. But this is why this board has also prioritized programs like AVID, right? So AVID stands for advancement via individual determination. It is a structure, if you will, it's not a program, but it's a structure that promotes very similar research-based practices like GEAR Up. So college visits, right, as an example, work around your resume, your transcript building, organization, writing skills, things of that nature. And so we've historically tried to really address that twofold, not just being reliant upon grant opportunities, which we'll continue to advocate for because we know there's some benefits and we've seen positive outcomes, but also sustainable programming like AVID. This is one of the reasons we moved away from isolated AVID programs in class and in schools, and we've moved to district-wide. So AVID is a district-wide strategy to kind of guarantee some of these experiences as we begin to scale up and roll it out across every school. You're welcome.
Member O'Hara Block?
I just want to, I like usually comment on things like this, so I feel like I kind of have to, but also it's like, it's just so exciting to be in a position where, sort of as Dr. Battle said, to see that we can see the growth in Tennessee as compared to Tennessee districts, but also to know the level at which we are competing and outcompeting Tennessee districts and also districts nationally is not a place that MNPS has been in historically. And this is not just now with the baseline, if I'm right about this, Dr. Changis, please signal if I'm wrong, but with the baseline also being 2022, that doesn't mean this is just sort of pandemic recovery. This is what the last two school years have meant and the kind of investments that we've made and the focus that Dr. Battle and her team have had. And when we look at all of the things that she just outlined, I think we should expect to continue to see growth like this over time. Now, it's hard to three-peat and four-peat and all the things that you've said before, and we certainly have had a number of challenges. But, but we've got the right systems in place for, you know, to continue to see that kind of improvement. And it is very validating to see that, not just on state assessments, but on the combination of state and national assessments and among districts in Tennessee and districts nationally. So just to restate it, it's just really cool. So congratulations.
Vice Chair, Nabal McKinnon.
And to piggyback off of board member Block, it is, it is really exciting to see us moving the needle for kids across our district in a way that we haven't traditionally been able to do. And so to, you know, we are at a point now where we have done a three-peat year over year over year with our schools within this district. That is historical within itself. And to see us move the needle where we are now outpacing the state in areas is pretty historic for us. And compared to how we are doing on a national scale, says a lot about Dr. Battle, her team, teachers, principals, the system and the way in which it is moving the needle to really support kids. And I just want to reemphasize this because the fact that you are looking at more than, is it more than 79,000, 7,900 districts? Did I get it right? Over 8,000 districts. I got that mixed up backwards, 87 something, yeah. Looking at more than 8,000 districts across the country and MNPS is ranking in the top 10 in both math and reading is phenomenal. And to be able to do it twice in a row, y'all, this is game changer. We are really doing what it takes. And it doesn't mean that we stop here. We know where we are. We know that work has to continue to happen, but we are seeing that the systems that are being put in place are moving the needle and we are getting the return on investment that we are asking for and that we are, and that our kids deserve. And so, thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you to your team, to MNPS, and everyone who makes this difference.
And if you don't mind, Chair, if there are no other comments, again, I must just send a loud thank you again to the entire team because on the brightest of days, on the hardest of days, our educators show up. They show up for our children. They pour in long beyond the hours that they are required to pour in. I mean, they're meeting students with so many different hats every day. And so I stand shoulder to shoulder with all of our educators across this district. It does not matter, principal, teachers, support staff, everyone is instrumental, our drivers, our transportation department, nutrition services. We cannot do this without everyone really leading and just optimizing their potential and their talents across the district. So forgive me for having the mic again, but just wanted to echo that and just how fortunate I am to work alongside such a great team.
Board member Elrod.
Thank you. First, it's good to see you again, Dr. Changis. I appreciate you getting up at midnight to read this information. I think last year, I got the text that it was out like around 2:30. So maybe that gave you some extra two and a half hours to do the work, get some sleep tonight. I cannot remember, and if you don't have this number off the top of your head, that's okay, I can get it later from the team. But can we know, or do we know off the top of our heads, what our average was last year so I can compare this year to last year, since we are doing this for two years in a row? It's okay.
Probably have to get back to you.
That's fair.
Believe I have it, but you're talking about the average in terms of the
And reading and math.
The grade levels.
Yes, sir.
I will have to get that back to you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I mean, we were, we, again, ranked quite highly last year, as you know. But we're at a very comparable place.
And just in case that wasn't heard, we were third and sixth last year. And then I know that you mentioned, again, truancy, that there is some positive growth there. And I know we've done an incredible amount of work with not only a pilot program in some of our most comprehensive high schools, but then throughout all of our schools to try to work on our truancy numbers. And you said there was a graph. Is that found within the NAEP report, or is that something we need to get from y'all?
Yes, you have them in the website, the National Education Recovery Scorecard. You can just go to Tennessee, click on Davison, Metro Nashville School System, and all the charts are there. So they're public documents, and I'll make it easy. I'll make sure you have them all by before the end of the week.
Okay. Yeah, it can be in the Friday. Perfect. Thank you. Again, I echo my colleagues' excitement. We were very excited last year, being third and sixth and being one of only two districts that had the growth in both reading and math. So this is incredible information. I want to say that it's because of not only all of our staff, like Dr. Battle mentioned, but it's a commitment to MNPS, not just from our, in our classrooms, but also within the support hub, but also from the city and providing us with that additional funding when we've needed it because we are the least-funded district in the entire state of Tennessee. And so we really, really require And so we really, really require a lot of that funding body to be on the Metro Council. And so we were really appreciative of that so that we can best utilize those funds within our teachers so that we can do this good work. So we appreciate it. We are proud to be good stewards of those dollars and that we have this return on investment that we can show to you. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and I'd just like to close out of, this is what our accountability looks like. I know people ask, what are we doing for accountability? And having outside validators showing our growth and showing the success that we have, and it has been sustained year over year. I think it's a really important highlight to do that we are achieving growth and we're continuing to achieve that growth and it's continued to build year over year that we'll get to higher rates proficiency and increase the rate of proficiency over time. So I know, as we say, we like to nerd out on data. This is the perfect example, when I say we like to nerd out on data, to prove that we are doing the work and that we're holding each other accountable. And like Dr. Battle said, the staff that continues to pour in, pour out day after day, hour after hour, the work does not go unnoticed and we appreciate it. All right, we'll move into our second half of our director's report, the school safety report.
All right, thank you again, Chair Player and Board Members. So I wanted to take some time to go over the contract that's before you tonight for the concealed weapons detection systems, as well as a general overview of our school safety initiatives that have been layered in over decades, and in particular, the last few years to protect students and staff. So I'll go ahead and tell you that a lot of the information we're going to cover tonight is based on the questions and feedback that I've received from, from each one of you in the past few weeks about our efforts to address school safety in a multi-layered, multifaceted approach. So thank you for your questions. Thank you for pushing on the clarity around where we are and how we're planning to move forward. So over the past several years, National Public Schools has made significant investments and security enhancements to ensure a safer environment for students and staff. This slide outlines some of the key measures we have implemented. Controlled access to schools regarding security vestibules have been added at main entrances to provide an additional layer of security before visitors can access the building. AI phones are also called AV intercom locks and main entrances allow staff to verify and approve entry before granting access. Badge access as, at exterior doors ensures that only authorized personnel can enter specific areas of our building. For our classroom and campus security, classroom doors with locking capabilities provide teachers and students with added protection in the event of an emergency. Shadow-resistant film has been installed on windows and entry points to make it more difficult to gain unauthorized access. Our security cameras and brandished weapons detection allow for real-time monitoring of campus activity with AI-assisted detection to alert staff and law enforcement if a weapon is visible on camera. Just to be clear, this refers to brandished or visible weapon detection included in our security camera network. What we are proposing today will be the purchase and installation of concealed weapon detection equipment, which represents another layer in our multi-layered approach here in the district. Other proactive safety measures, we have K-9 units capable of weapon detection for searches that help deter and detect potential threats. We have safety ambassadors for elementary schools that are assigned to support a safe environment and reinforce security protocols. We have audio enhancement with emergency alerts that assures that safety announcements and emergency notifications are clearly heard throughout campuses. In our law enforcement partnership, in the last few years, MND has expanded their pool of SROs, providing greater coverage across middle and high schools while expanding into elementary schools. We also maintain a partnership with the MND for community police officers to be stationed outside of schools which do not yet have an SRO. We have MND response teams that ensure a swift and coordinated law enforcement response when needed. These enhancements reflect our ongoing commitment to school safety. While we have already taken many steps to improve security, we continue to evaluate and invest in additional measures to protect our students and staff. This did not start today or yesterday. We've been at, hard at work at this for quite some time. So by now, I'm sure you some, you're somewhat familiar with the new Evolve systems based on their rollout at our high school and our presentation at the board meeting. As a reminder, the way they work is for individuals to walk through the metal detectors, which incorporate AI technology to not only detect metal, but also the size, density, and shape of objects to look for specific areas of concern that are then displayed on a monitor which is operated by a staff member. If an alert goes off, the student or individual going through the detector will then go for a secondary screening where a staff member will look at the area that was identified to determine if the object is dangerous or not. These are two options, a single-lane entry system and a dual-lane entry system. Which system is used will be based on the layout and flow of students or visitors into the building. Additionally, in order to speed up the process, we have tables laid out beside each lane where you can take out items that commonly activate an alert, such as a computer, iPad, binders, umbrellas, or glass cases to further enhance the speed of entry and arrival. So while the underlying technology of these weapons detection systems are from Evolve, the units we are procuring are from Motorola, which include enhancements to the cameras and connections to our Vigilon camera control centers so alerts can be sent to those stations as well as a tablet set up near the detection systems. I also know there have been questions about the Federal Trade Commission and Evolve. Our understanding is that this involves some marketing materials and claims made by the company in the past regarding the systems, but are not currently in use. The outcome of that investigation was a settlement in which schools had the option to terminate their contracts early, which is, which to our knowledge actually did not happen. To be clear, we know this isn't a perfect solution, excuse me, to be clear, we know this isn't a perfect solution to every challenge we face when it comes to keeping our schools safe. It is once again meant to be a part of a multi-layered approach to safety. So tonight, before the board, will be a contract amendment, which we've already discussed, based upon the approval of the agenda, to our existing security contract with systems integrations that will allow us to move forward with procuring concealed weapons detection systems for our high schools. We will be leveraging an existing contract that includes the option for this equipment, along with our security camera network support and the OmniAlert brandished weapons program. The initial procurement was bid out on April 15th, 2024, and the vendor was selected after a competitive procurement process with a board-approved contract on January 25th, 2024. The proposed amendment envisions equipment, installation, and training for all of our high schools, but could be later amended to include other school levels based on the expansion of this pilot to all high schools. I also know there are some questions about the, or have been some questions about the differences between a traditional metal detector, which we have used at our athletic or school-sponsored events, and the weapons detection systems we're proposing for entry and arrival at our schools. Traditional metal detectors work by detecting any type of metal, meaning that every metallic item, whether it's a belt buckle, keys, or a laptop, triggers an alert. This results in a high secondary screening rate, often over 50%, requiring students and staff to remove personal belongings and have their bags searched. The process is labor-intensive, slows down entry, requires a significant number of staff to manage. Concealed weapons detection systems, on the other hand, also detect metal, but use artificial intelligence to differentiate between everyday items and those with, those with a weapon signature. This technology reduces unnecessary alerts, keeping the secondary screening rate under 10%, which means fewer interruptions and faster entry. Instead of requiring everyone to remove metal objects, it uses targeted screening, allowing most students and staff to move quickly through without delay. It also requires fewer staff to operate effectively while maintaining a high level of security. Ultimately, our goal is to implement a system that enhances school safety without creating unnecessary delays or disruptions to the school day. By using a weapons detection system, we can streamline the arrival process while ensuring a secure learning environment for all students and staff. So as we look at expanding the weapons detection system pilot, we need to determine the appropriate number of screening lanes for each high school. To do that, we're considering several key factors. First, we need to assess the size of the student body. The efficiency of the system depends on how many students can be screened per minute, ensuring that we can move students through quickly without creating a bottleneck at entry points. Next, we must consider the space and layout of campus entry points. Different, different schools have unique setups, and with some having designated entry points for buses, student drivers, and staff. We need to analyze how these areas function and ensure there's enough space for screening lanes, tables for laptop removal and retrieval, and areas for secondary screening. Staffing analysis is also critical. We need to determine how many staff members are available to oversee the screening process while still maintaining coverage at other key areas of the school. The goal is to balance security measures with a smooth operation of a school day. And finally, transportation considerations play a role. We may need to stagger bus and loading times so we don't have too many students entering at once, which could overwhelm the system. At the same time, we want to ensure that bus schedules remain on track so that students arrive and depart efficiently. By carefully evaluating these factors, we can implement a scalable and effective screening process that enhances safety while minimizing disruption to the school day. So as we're thinking about the implementation plan, as we move forward with the implementation plan, if approved with amendment tonight for weapons detection systems, we have structured a plan to ensure a smooth rollout across our schools. First, we begin with identifying the funding source, requisition, and purchase order processing to secure necessary equipment. As that happens, we will conduct a, conduct school visits to finalize the unit requirements and the design flow of each campus entry points, looking at the school's operations and taking lessons we've already learned from the pilot. We will also hold introductory sessions for principals to familiarize them with the technology and its impact on school operations. Next, we'll move into the deployment phase. Starting with the arrival of the initial equipment shipments, the rollout will be gradual with approximately two schools per week receiving the new systems to ensure proper installation and troubleshooting. Before the system goes live, we will provide school-specific communications to families so they understand the process and expectations. To ensure successful implementation, training sessions for assistant principals, deans, and campus support staff will take place about two weeks before school's deployment. This will allow leadership teams to be well-prepared. And finally, training for remaining school-based staff will ensure that all personnel are equipped to support the transition and maintain a safe and efficient screening process. We believe by following this step-by-step approach, we can effectively integrate these systems into our schools while minimizing disruptions and ensuring a safe environment for all students and staff. If this expanded pilot is approved, we will continue to evaluate the success of these systems for consideration at other tier levels, meaning middle and elementary schools, subject to additional funding availability. As we're talking about investments in security systems, I also must look at the systems and structures we have in place to support our students in other ways. While the budget is still being developed, here are some aspirational ideas we've had in the past that could also really complement this comprehensive approach. In the past, we've talked about college and career visors. By investing in college and career visors, we can free up time and space for our school counselors to focus more intently on traditional socio-emotional health counseling for our students. We could expand mental health supports, whether staff or services, ensuring any student has their mental health needs being met by trained professionals is paramount to not only stop a tragedy, but to keep our students on track for success in life. Student success centers. We know that exclusionary discipline can be necessary for a safe and well-disciplined school. We also know that out-of-school suspension may not serve the purpose of correcting and restoring student behavior. We've talked in the past about student success centers as a way of supporting students during their time out of school to keep them on track while receiving intensive SCL supports. They, this success center also includes a family component because we know that supporting the entire family can prove to be successful as well. So with that, I will conclude my update around our school safety initiatives. And Chair, I will turn it back over to you for any questions or feedback.
Thank you for that report. I will open it up for questions and comments. Anybody have a question or a comment? Uh, School Board Member Chan?
Um, I had two questions. So first off, the weapon detection system, do we know like the accuracy percentage of the AI that we use to detect the weapon signature?
So let me introduce a few folks who might, uh, let me introduce a few folks who might address some of the conversations. Chief Sullivan, who is here, she's our chief of operations. We also have EO Ken Stark, who is here, and we also have Gio, who is joining us from Evolve. I could answer the question, but I think y'all would do a much better job at responding.
It's, I appreciate that, Dr. Battle. And what a great question. It's a really in-depth question, and, and I appreciate it. And I, I'm going to ask our company representative just to give the, the most appropriate answer for you.
Sure, it's great to see all of you again. That's a great question. Again, my name is Jill LeMond, I'm Vice President of Education over at Evolve Technology. To your point, it's not a perfect science, right? And that is one of the most important parts about our technology is that because it's using the AI, it's actually learning, not from those individual systems, but from our entire fleet of over 6,000 systems across the world. And that is, the people who are actually using this system every day, the operators, are what we do, we call it tagging, different items to actually teach the system. So it's getting more and more accurate. Part of what the district would be getting with this contract is actually quarterly, if not more often, software updates, where the system is actually learning from itself and from the data. I don't have a perfect number for you because there's different environments and different settings. What I can tell you is that I was, I asked Mr. Stark, it's okay to share that at the high school, you're seeing numbers that are less than 10% typically on a daily basis of students who are getting stopped and looking for weapons. I'm unsure if you've shared how many weapons have been found, but if that number helps you, that, that means somewhere close to 90% of students are walking through the system without interruption and getting their butts in seats for instruction, which, like Dr. Battle said, we're always trying to balance the need for the environment and the positive nurturing environment, and then also the safety and security element, so.
Your mic.
Sorry, um, can I ask a clarification question about that? Okay, so, um, kind of like building on that question, um, because it's like a machine-based learning model, and that's what it's called. Are these models like different at different schools? So then if, like, one school has more weapons detected, then would that school have like a better, I guess, a better, um, like accuracy? Or like, would it be better detecting than through other schools?
So what you heard me describe were the types of equipment that's available. So a single-lane, fewer folks, double-lane, more folks. That's what you heard me describing. But generally speaking, they're very similar systems. Our determination is just about the rollout, right? So how many do we need based upon the enrollment size of the school, the design of the layout? So you'll see consistency in the equipment. How many systems that are needed, which are the same, would depend on the student and school population. Anything else y'all want to answer that?
Just, no, it's okay, that's great.
Um, my second question was, I think, about the two per week or the two, like implementing them to, to them, like, is it, would it be at just one school? Or is it like one, at one school and one at another?
So it means the system at one school, regardless of how many systems we need, and the systems at another school, regardless of the number that we need.
Thank you.
Yes.
School Member, when?
Um, I would like to know a little bit more about how the pilot at Antioch went. Um, I know that you stated that weapons are detected or students are stopped about 10% of the time, but if you could ask, tell me more about how it went at Antioch with the large population of students, that'd be amazing.
Yeah, and I'll invite the team to chime in. I have had the pleasure of observing it on a number of days. So a few things that we were observing for, one was the ease, right, of students coming through the system, which from day one has actually been pretty smooth and seamless. The other thing we were looking for was how long did it take from the first student who came into the last student, we came in in the normal rush of, of arrival? I think the first day took about 20 minutes. I think they're down to 10, 15 minutes at this point because they've been able to just kind of learn and tweak things along the way. We've been following the number of students and visitors scanned throughout the day. We've been following the alert rate. So I just want to be clear, the alert rate just means that it required a secondary screening. It does not mean that there was anything found or located. We've actually not experienced that in the pilot at Antioch. Just something triggered, we needed to do an extra search and check the first week, the first couple of days, it was eyeglass cases. And so we learned that right off the bat, which is why I added it in my talking points today. We know that's something that will, will pick up. And so those are some of the, the common things on the ground. It was just more so like conversations with students and staff members about the ease, about their perceptions of the weapons detection system, which were all pretty positive, much easier than I thought. I've seen this before. This is like pretty common for us as well. And if I'm forgetting any other data points or information more, or Gio, please feel free to chime in.
As we have seen, I mean, I think we were even down to 7% today or yesterday, if I remember, of folks being pulled up, pulled aside just for a secondary search. But by and large, I've just watched students just walk through and, and staff members as well.
And let me clarify, you actually were not shooting for that number to be zero.
Right.
The goal is not for that number to be zero. That, like, we do Like, we do want to know if there are things that we need to be paying attention to or looking at as, as students or staff or visitors are coming in. So I, I just, sometimes when you do these percentages and numbers, it's kind of absolutes. But the goal is not necessarily get to zero, it's to minimize it to the best of our ability to increase the, the, the level of security we have, but also not to disrupt the school environment.
And then lastly, I just wanted to add, as a comment, kind of as a school community, especially in high schools, there's a lot that we don't know about the Evolve system. A lot of things that came in the conversation are, yeah, like the thing that is putting a lot of people at ease is that this is in the Bridgeton Arena, this is in the Nissan Stadium. So there are things that we have seen before. And then, as you all have mentioned, that there are ways to make this less invasive, to make them look better, to make them look a lot less scary for students. Absolutely, all things could, should be considered, delay, financial feasibility, but nothing is worth more than the safety of our students. So let's keep adding these layers of protection and keep looking into, looking into it. And yeah, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Board Member Fain and then Board Member Elrod.
Thank you. So mine is more so on the expansion of the mental health supports. I'm sure as we roll out programs to support that addition, we'll learn more. Can anyone speak on what we're thinking in lieu of those mental health advocates?
Yeah, so you might recall, particularly as we were responding to and coming out of the pandemic, this was a priority for the school board, and it's reflected in the investments that have been made over the few years. So we have abundantly increased mental health supports across the district. What we would be focused on now is reducing kind of the ratio, right, for the mental health providers, but also ensuring a consistency of supports across every school. And so if you compare the mental health supports that were in place today versus pre-pandemic, I mean, you will see a significant improvement, but we still have work that we can do. So it's just about part of our continuous improvement, know where you are, but don't stay there. We know where we are today, but we're also looking for how can we expand and reach each more students to provide what they need.
Do we have outside resources or are they all in-house? Like, do we have a third-party service that we partner with?
So it's our resources, but we do partner with key leaders in the mental health supports because we want to make sure that they're trained, licensed individuals who can actually do the, the critical work in connecting with our students and, and getting them what they need. So we do, we definitely contract in this space to make sure that we have the expanded availability across our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Battle.
Board Member Elrod and then Board Member Tyler?
Thank you so much. So first, I want to say thank you to Dr. Battle and her team. A lot of my questions or concerns, as I have had many, have been answered here, so I appreciate that. I want to just make sure that I understand some of it, or just to confirm some information, and I might have some additional questions as I go through what I have kind of prepared. I appreciate the original discussion about all the enhancements that we have, as we have a multi-layered approach for security, which is incredibly important. As we know, there's not one thing that will completely do protection for any school or any location. So I appreciate that. Historically, I have not been a fan of us discussing hardening our schools by doing metal detectors. So I appreciate also this slide that discusses the differences between metal detectors and what I'm calling metal detector lights, which is this weapon detection system. So I appreciate the differences between those two. I am grateful to know that there are less pings going off because of it and that there's a low secondary screening rate, as I was concerned that it would highlight students and possibly highlight schools as well in a negative light. Metal detectors in general, a concern that I have had is that it's more punitive and that it has changed to a school's appearance and their perception and their climate. I understand that this will not have as much of that because particularly it's something that's already inside of our city, as mentioned by Hannah, our junior board member. So I'm hoping that we'll have some more effectiveness as well. Additionally, because it's with Evolve, I'm hoping that we will have some integration within our city, as I know that their programming is used and their systems are used by MMPD and our Parks Department. I want to take a quick second to thank MMPD for the additional SROs. I appreciate that being mentioned here. This is our first year having a SRO at every middle school. That has been really difficult for us as a school system to be able to obtain because police officers are so hard to obtain. And then when they have someone that comes through the programming, they need those people out on the streets. And so we usually don't get those first cadets. And so I appreciate that they've prioritized us. In my district, that is a huge request, is SROs more so than this type of product. But there's always concerns about safety because our students are very important to us, whether they're our children, like my own children that attend MMPS, my past students from when I was a teacher, or of course, all of my constituents. A question that I might have for us is, as we continue to implement this, I appreciate that it says that we're going to do it kind of in a slow process where it's no more than two schools, so we can manage it. When do we think all of those schools will be done? I understand that there's probably going to be issues with getting the materials, there's probably going to be issues with, of course, us taking our time. Are we aiming to try to get it all done by the end of the school year? Or are we hoping that it will take a calendar year? What are we planning on for that rollout?
No, so I mean, it's all really to be determined based upon the procurement process. Well, we definitely couldn't, we couldn't get ahead of the amendment process as well. So if approved tonight, that's going to give us opportunity to work closely with systems integration about how quickly we could obtain the equipment, how quickly they can be shipped in, and then really putting dates to our training plan for, for our staff. So to be determined, but of course, you know, if approved, we will want to move efficiently but effectively, right? Because there's no measure that you can implement that is going to yield what you are anticipating if you do it haphazardly. And so we want to make sure they're really deliberate in their process, as well as there's no one security measure that will solve for every challenge that, that is out there. And so we've got a, at the beginning of this presentation, I listed out a ton of security measures we have in place. Now, I'm, I'm going to be transparent, that there, you create tension between some of those because you have to be clear about what you're trying to solve for. And so we've been adding security measures over the years, being responsive, and now we've got to figure out how to work around some of those security, security measures that solve for one thing that may not solve for this thing. And so we need to be very deliberate and intentional about that. So we'll move swiftly, but we also want to be very, we want to, we want to move with high integrity around the implementation of the equipment.
Which I appreciate. One of my concerns that I know I voiced in the last board meeting was what was that rollout going to look like and making sure students didn't feel like it was being done to them or certain populations within our schools were not felt like they were being targeted by the implementation of the program. Within that, I think your answer leads me to my next question, which was the security vestibules. My understanding of how it's currently looking is students come through those security vestibles, vestibules, pardon me, and then they are going through the detection, weapons detection system. Are they able to stay within that vestibule or do we have students that are standing outside in inclement weather? And if so, is that something that we'll need to consider through future capital budgets?
So again, it go, it depends on the size of the school and the layout of the school. Every school has a security vestibule in some form or fashion. So that's part of what we've got to go and study now. Because we've now put security vestibules in all of our schools, now we've got to consider how you then implement a weapons detection system that allows for students to get in the building, not to be out in conditions, for the extra overcrowding not to happen outside the building, but ultimately to keep everybody safe. And so that's one of the key next steps for our team is to be on the ground with our school leaders, our school teams, to do that assessment and come to agreement around how you create this seamless pathway into the school.
Yep. I know we prioritized funding all those vestibules over the past couple of years, just getting them all done, I think last year, actually.
That is correct.
And so it...
There's some fun designs out there.
There are some. We made it work, guys. But it is a really important part of our security features, and I think it will be a key part to how we have this rollout. And so I want to make sure that that's being used, and sometimes we have to re-spend money, but in, under consideration. With this request of funding and Chair, if this is a question that needs to be asked during the agenda portion, please let me, you can tell me that and I will re-ask that question at that time. I know that there's of course a cost amongst, for this product. And we have a lot of additional costs coming up this year because of our Esser Bridge and us having to fund that. I believe that this is a good fund, a good use of our dollars, to Hannah's point as well. My concern is, of course, what we will have to take away from our plate to make space for this. That is not to say that we don't do it. It is a say of, for us as a board, I think it's going to be important as we get closer to the budget season, though I like to argue that budget season is all the time, year-round. But as we get closer to those conversations with council, I want us as a board to be able to say, yes, and, we need this, and I know that this is a new way of us spending our dollars, it is a new request, but we also have our other, very important, which, as we just discussed through our NAEP results, we have all the other things that we're needing to continue through our Esser Bridge, particularly this year, because we do not have the ability to use our fund balance on that. So I want us to be able to balance both, being able to ask for this, if it's an important thing to us as a board and we make that decision, but also that we're able to balance the everyday, day-to-day classroom assessment and classroom environment and materials that we need. The biggest requests or concern that I've had from parents is they've wanted to know where students are going to be when they're going through this process, and so I appreciate the vestibule thing and that it's going to be tailored. The other biggest request has been that they get advance notice so they can plan accordingly, particularly if they have a tendency to be tardy. Of course, it is brought up, of course, school start time conversation. And I know that that will be something that we continue to discuss, as it is something we already currently discuss, I promise, and this will be considered. I appreciate that it's down to less than 10 minutes right now. I know through the testing that we saw that it was up to like 30 minutes in some schools. So again, I appreciate all the answers, I appreciate you and your team, as I know I've been asking a lot more questions than usual in response to this, and so I appreciate that help, and I believe that's gotten all through all of them. Thank you.
Board Member Tyler, then Board Member Young?
Okay, so when we're looking at scaling the pilot, one of the things that you talked about was the staffing analysis. So will this require us to hire more people?
So it could eventually. So what we need to do first, like we did at Antioch, we studied the staffing makeup of the school, determining like roles and responsibilities, what does it take per machine? I will say day one, we probably had double the number of folks there than we needed. We've now learned that we can back that off quite, quite a bit. And so it will take a school-by-school analysis, because let's remember, we are a student-based budgeting district. So school teams are empowered, we're making the staffing decisions outside of meeting the classroom requirements and class size. And so it will take us being very intentional and looking at who's on deck and where there might be some gaps that we will need to fill. But we're going to, again, individual school, we're not taking a one-size-fits-all approach. This will be school by school and making these determinations.
And I'm kind of to piggyback off of that. So what is the extra lift that we're asking of our existing staff to do this?
There's initial training, which we do with pretty good ease in the, for the largest staff we have in the district. And then there is probably a 30-minute at most shift in responsibility at the start of the day. Most schools are going to be able to manage the normal flow throughout the day. It's the arrival flow where everybody arrives at the same time for the start of the school day. So we've narrowed this down for, it's actually less than 30 minutes. But if you include setup and, and any prep that's needed, it's 30 minutes or less of a focus time for staff members to train, training outside of that to scan everyone in.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not choosing teachers who might have a planning period during that first period to run this. I don't want them to lose what they need to do their job appropriately.
This is before the start of the school day.
Okay.
All of this happens before the start of the school day, and it's highly unlikely. So because we, we're fortunate that we have some dedicated roles that are focused around safety and security already in our building. So for example, campus support employees, we have safety ambassadors in our elementary schools, we have deans of students that are all about the culture and the environment. So, you know, many of our schools are already equipped with, with those leaders who is kind of part of their roles and responsibilities already. And we'll look to retrain and then kind of equip them and empower them to lead in a more innovative way as we look to scale the weapons detection system.
And forgive me if you already addressed this, but I don't remember hearing it. So is this going to be on all day long for visitors and students arriving late?
That's correct.
And so how will necessary staff be needed? Because obviously, you're going to need more during the initial influx, but once that backs off, what's that going to look like for our existing staff?
We've got a pretty perfected system right now in one of our schools of what's required. Again, as you think about staffing models that are in place already, you already have individuals who are actually manning these spaces, right? We're just now equipping them with resources in order to do it more efficiently, efficiently, either through the front lobby, kind of vestibule area, or the main office. This is the kind of the routine that those leaders were already in. Now they just have a more advanced technology way to, to do an extra screening and to get individuals into the building. I, I will tell you, every day I went, I walked through the weapons detection system as well, right? Because it's going to require kind of all hands on deck, making sure that we're all kind of modeling and staying true to the security enhancement that we're looking to implement.
Okay. Looking at the transportation considerations, so knowing that we're going to have to maybe stagger the unloading of buses, is that going to change pickup times? Or will buses just hold students at the school?
Yep. So what typically happens, this is actually a recommendation that came from our principals. So one of the things that happens is when students arrive, most times they're arriving, particularly in our high school tier, because they're first, they typically arrive a few minutes before they can actually unload from, from the bus anyway. And so all we're doing right now is studying if there is a systematic way to say, well, don't unload, in this case, we have 27 buses, don't unload 27 buses at the same time. Let's unload the first six, then those buses go, then unload the next six, let those buses go. I mean, we've, this is actually helping us enhance a lot of our normal operation flow anyway. And so that's something that principals recommended we kind of study and look at. It did not require a later pickup or earlier pickup, it just meant we were managing from the point in time that the bus arrived at the school.
Okay. All right, great. That kind of follows my next question of, have we noticed that this is impacting when students get to class?
It has not. Again, we're testing this, this is a beautiful thing for us, we're testing this right now in our largest school, period, regardless of tier. And the first day, we were maybe five minutes before we got the last student in. Now, we are well before the bell, and students have come in and transitioned into the school, picked up breakfast, went to their locker and in class on time. That's a goal that we set for the team. And, and the, the other thing that we can consider here is as we think about single lanes, double lanes, how many lanes, you really want to narrow the entry points within the school, if we see that, then we'll adjust, right? That might mean we need an extra lane to create a faster, more efficient process and into the school, but we've not experienced that at Antioch.
Okay. And are you also thinking of staggering maybe student drivers and buses, or has that not been an issue? And I guess that's a school-by-school decision.
Yeah, and so this is part of the normal operations, particularly in high schools anyway, so we haven't noticed a need to shift this. Most high schools have two, two arrival points, right, that are managed and supervised, usually for buses, because you got to keep bus lanes clear, and then one for drivers and for car riders. And so that's kind of helped us also manage the flow. In fact, in this particular scenario, but car riders and drivers were actually able to shut that lane down much sooner than we are because we have so many buses that students ride. And so that's going to vary depending on the school, but it's something that we anticipated before the first day and have continued to reduce the amount of time. On that side, they get students in within less than 10 minutes, so they're usually all processed, and now we're only using one lane for the entry point.
Okay, great. I think I had a couple of other questions, but other people have kind of hit on them, or you did a pretty good job answering them in the presentation itself. So I appreciate how detailed you have been going over the differences between the different things and also addressing the concerns people had had. So if I think of anything else, I'll let you know, but I think you got me.
Okay.
Board Member Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a lot of questions, so bear with me. But let's go back, if we could, to the RFP, where I guess this was more encompassing than just a weapons detection system, since this isn't something we currently have. That RFP, what exactly was it for? Because I know there were just two vendors that responded, and I feel like there's probably several other... several other options out there, so I want to learn more about that RFP and how this particular vendor was selected with this technology.
Yes, thank you for the question. And just to recap, the result of the competitive bid process, which was the RFP, was released back in April, 15th, 2024, was approved in June. We did have two vendors who responded, but I'm going to kick it to Chief Sullivan to talk about, just because I'm not a part of the process, which is proper and accurate, I'm going to let Chief Sullivan and her team respond to the details of that RFP.
Thank you. It was an RFP for, that started our Vigilon services that we're using it for, but it also was broad, it was a broad services contract that allowed for us to expand our entire security ecosystem of products. So as we were moving into the AI-based products for security, we kept our requests open enough that we could look at everything that might be out there in the atmosphere, so to speak, so that we could continue to learn about different products, continue to expand our services, and to refine what we are doing to provide safety in our buildings. So it was a broad-based services contract that allowed us to pick from a suite of options.
And I know there were, I think, maybe Wilson County was mentioned as another school system that had, is it this same brand, or is it just this technology in general?
If I'm not mistaken, it was the same exact system. We sent a team from our school district, from the school as well, to go out and observe and ask questions and to learn. They're using just a pilot program right now where they're rotating the system throughout their high schools currently, so they started kind of in a pilot as well. But we went out and asked questions and took some notes and picked their brains around lessons learned to help us. It really paid off. I think by day one, we were pretty efficient, because we had learned so much from them as well as from the team on the ground.
The great thing about that was, and just tag on to that real quick, is that some of the Antioch staff were able to join as well, and they were able to see and talk to the principal and the, it was Mount Juliet High, the Mount Juliet staff as well. So it was, it was, we learned so much in just a quick 30-minute trip, so.
And so the cost of, I think the contract document shows 1.25 million per year. Is this to lease the equipment every year?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's just on the equipment expense? That's not factoring in any sort of additional ancillary costs, whether it be staffing or tables or chairs?
That's correct. Thank you for that clarified question. It's for equipment only, it is a recurring cost, and that is, that amount right now is only for high schools. So if we move forward with middle and elementary in any form, shape, form, or capacity, we would need to expand upon that, but it does not include the resources, it does not include staffing to date.
So when it comes to staffing, now that we've sort of perfected it, so to speak, at Antioch, how many staff members are having to operate that in the morning, and then what does that look like during the day after the morning rush?
So morning, then day.
So we have it at about four per lane who are personing each lane, and four to five, kind of depending on how you set it up. And then as you, as you close a lane, so like if we have two lanes working, as you close that lane, then those staff members are able to go and do other duties as they do, and close that lane, again, being able to go to other duties. And as it's working at Antioch, then, you know, they go to other duties as they would normally perform in the school before school starts. And then during the day, we have, we have one person who is at that post and reviewing folks as they come through, and then, but that can also, as we move forward with this, we have our own equipment, we'll be able to move that equipment into the security vestibule and into the office area, and then it'll just be a part of your regular entrance into the school.
So are these, are these teachers, are these other classes or non-certificated staff that are doing this? Who are they and like, because I think some of the, some of the concern from staff might be, of the many hats they have to wear, is this another one that they get to now?
I mean, rightly so. I think, you know, you get questions all the time about why not win this, how that, and what is often left out of the conversation is the demand and the responsibility and the staffing and the, like, all the things that are required to implement something like this. Right now, what we have learned, so every school kind of already has an arrival plan and post of duty, if you will. And so this, again, is just equipping those individuals in some way with resources on their post of duty. It is mainly covered right now, the pilot, campus support, deans, and I think there's one AP who's kind of over operations, who's kind of helping support everybody and train everyone there, but that's the extent of the manpower that's needed. Listen, I, I agree, I've heard this kind of sentiment in a few comments. We, we need to protect our teachers, and we need to protect our teachers, right? So what we don't want to do is to dip into their planning time or their instructional learning time. So as we're designing this, the reason we're trying to be deliberate is that we don't interrupt all those important components that still need to be a part of our instructional day. But right now, we've seen, and again, it'll take a staff-by-staff analysis, we're seeing campus support, we're seeing deans, which is a part of their responsibility as well. And then if the school has an administrator who takes on operations like this school does, then you would have leadership in that capacity. Could also be safety ambassadors, it could also be classroom associates. I mean, there are a number of roles that we could train for, depending on the need and demand of the school.
Sure. And so in the pilot at Antioch, have we actually, and I'm not saying this to be funny, but have we actually taken an actual weapon through it to see how it was detected?
We did do that.
Not that I'm for taking a weapon into a school, but...
We, that was a part of the training.
Part of your training. And it's actually part of the training that is encouraged by the company and our company representatives, it's part of their training program that they take us through. And we have done that with our police officers present, et cetera, so we have done that, and it always hits.
Excellent. And so with this being not just a metal detecting system, now with the advent of, say, 3D printers, there are weapons that are made from things other than metal, can this pick up things, weapons that are not metal?
I want to be careful how we talk about all of your safety planning, I don't want to poke holes in your safety plan and tell the bad guys what to do, but to your point, this is going to look for metal and, so it's metal and the other components. And we could probably talk through that maybe at a closed session more about security, but I'm not going to get into that. Yes, sir.
I thought it was important to mention that this is more encompassing than a metal detector, which I think with the advent of 3D printers is unfortunately necessary. And so I guess, suppose tonight we approve this contract amendment, what does that rollout timeline look like? Like, when do we expect the first unit's division to begin?
Tomorrow, we start the process based upon having an approved amendment that allows us to begin to work with system integrations, to work with Evolve on the procurement process. I'm confident that there's enough awareness that we're ready to start moving on this scale across our schools. And so we will work as swiftly, and again, as deliberately as we can, to start training. We've already had conversations with our school leaders about it, and we had to hold them off a little bit, don't do anything yet, we can't get ahead of the amendment process, but they know to be prepared for training, for observation time, for us to be on the ground pretty swiftly and immediately, doing the analysis so that we can procure the equipment and get them into our school buildings.
So assuming this passes tonight, do you have, and I understand this would be possibly a moving deadline, but do you have a pie-in-the-sky goal of when each high school would have it in place and operational?
So this will take, this will take weeks, potentially months to get to every, so we often talk about our schools as 12 high schools, we actually have 24, I believe it is. And so, like, we're talking about every high school, not just our 12 zoned schools. So this is all dependent, and, you know, sometimes the public doesn't, is not fully aware that you could write a check tomorrow and still not have everything in and all the training done in weeks or months. And so it will be dependent on what's available to us. I believe there's a pretty significant availability at this point, and so we would, based upon the availability, maximize that availability and getting it into our schools. So it will take weeks and months. This is true with any strategy or initiative that kind of covers entire grade level or every school across the district. Our commitment is, if approved this evening, that we will begin immediately on the procurement process, the contracting process, getting that all executed, training and implementing into our schools.
All right. Well, I'll just end with, I think this is the right step. If it were up to me and this pen were magic, I would waive it, and every middle and high school would have this in operation tomorrow, but that's not the world we live in. So I'm looking forward to this rolling out, being perfected on a larger scale at all the high schools, and then us putting the pencil to it to figure out that cost for middle schools, especially in the future.
Yeah, and thank you for highlighting that. So the high level of expertise and confidence on the team and taking things to scale, this is not our first time, taking things to scale, if you think about our SRO program historically, was high school, we moved into the middle school space, and now we've moved into elementary space. You could almost name any strategy. It's never been everybody all at the same time, because at our scale, that's hard to do. But being very intentional, deliberate, and having a clear plan, we've been pretty precise in moving forward and finding ways to accelerate the plan when possible.
Thank you.
School board member Nabata Kimmy, and then school board member Mays.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to be at Antioch High School during the rollout of the weapons detection system and watch firsthand how students flowed through in and out, and also had to go through the weapons detection myself. And when we talk about the accuracy of them identifying things, I, even in my own case, I went, I set off the alarm, so I'm part of that whatever percentage that we talked about carrying in Chick-fil-A biscuits for students and staff at the, at Antioch High School, and the biscuits went off because of the shape and the size and the density of the containers that I held them in. And so even with that, felt really confident in the system as we navigated through that system, to see the types of things that they were navigating. My concerns, and I've expressed them before, was about that holdup at the beginning as people are walking through, and there was, over time, a clear flow-through and ease over the days in which we did so. So I started out, I attended at the beginning and then a couple of days later to kind of see the difference in the flow, and huge difference from day one to day three in that process. So I really appreciate the intentional work that we had, and I was also able to see, like we said at the beginning, there was a lot of people there to help and support. By the end of the week, it kind of curtailed to the staff who would be working it, so to see the flow between both was reassuring, that it helped. My question to you is around funding, Dr. Battle. Let's talk about where we're getting the money, as far as, like, so where are we as around funding? And budget-wise, what is something that we need to consider going into the new budgeting season to continue to sustain this current system?
I mean, you know, based upon a lot of questioning, you probably hear me alluding to the sense of urgency, right? And so part of this is ultimately not to wait until a new budget cycle, so all things are on the table right now. So we are digging into the investments that we already have. I mean, it will require some repurposing, as was alluded to, we're opening to conversations and partnerships with our elected officials as well. What I will say is, I think the history of the city and this board is that we are able to prioritize the needs of the district, and so we've not taken anything off the table because there's a sense of urgency to move on the project. And as we, again, not getting ahead of the amendment process, right? There are some things that could shift and change, I mean, we're working all in estimates right now anyway, and so as we begin to narrow that down, hopefully in the next few days, that'll give us more insight around what might be available to us, but at this point, there's not anything off the table.
Thank you. And then, just lost my train of thought, never mind, I'll pass. Thank you.
Board member Mays, and then board member Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. So I have all the notes written down over here, but I'll try to be succinct. So we talked about, we talked about a lot of things. Funding is at the top of my question list, and we just sort of talked about that, but I want to make sure that we're very clear, when we ask for things like this, we need to be very clear with our constituents that asking for this doesn't mean that we have a magic pot of money sitting out back that we can go and shake the tree and fund this thing. It's going to be very important to understand that, to your point, Dr. Battle, we will have to look at how we're going to maybe reallocate some additional funding if this thing passes, so that we can make sure that the rollout begins as quickly as possible. But I want to make sure, I've had a couple of constituents reach out to me to ask me if I would support this, and my response was, once I get all my questions answered, then I'll make my decision. And part of that is understanding that you can't always, you know, you can't always just, you have to, at some point, if we're outside of the budget cycle, there's a possibility of having to rob Peter to pay Paul. But understanding that the safety of our children is absolutely the number-one priority. We have to do what we have to do if we're going to make sure that we are protecting them by any means necessary. I have been, like Dr. Nabata McKinney, we've both been on the ground at Antioch High School, witnessing how the students have adapted to this change. And I must say that the look on the faces of the students as they walked in the door that first day was a look of comfort, more than anything else. There was no anxiety, it was more of a reassurance, to Dr. Nabata McKinney's point, more of a reassurance that, yes, we are being cared for, and yes, we're being protected. And I must commend the staff at Antioch High School for how well they've done, and as I was standing there, as the students started coming in, I was amazed at how quickly but efficiently they were able to get students through that vestibule. It was phenomenal, actually. So I'm very excited for that. And I think something that was mentioned earlier that I want to make sure that we are very clear on, there was a comment made earlier about 10% or maybe a something, and I didn't write it down.
Alert rate.
Yes. I want to make sure that we're very clear, that did not indicate that there were weapons found.
That's correct. That just 10% or less, we're down to 7% this week for a secondary alert, but there haven't been no, no threats found as a result of that.
That's very important that we mention that, because I don't want anybody walking away saying, oh, there was something found, there were no threats. So let's just be very clear of that. And the ease of entry was impressive as well. You know, even from that first day when it was a new, it was a new system being implemented, and the students weren't really that clear on what they needed to do. By day three, they knew exactly before they even walked into the school what they needed to remove from their backpacks or not even bring into the building, so.
Well, and if I can give a shout-out, we have a group of student leaders at the school that created a student video to share with their peers about what to expect. school that created a student video to share with their peers about what to expect and how it worked. And so we will incorporate that as a part of our training materials and another opportunity for student leaders across the district because in no time, I don't know that I could have done it that quickly, in no time, they recorded, they organized themselves, they coordinated, and the video was in our hands and ready to, to push out. And so
Exactly.
kudos to those student leaders. They, they have been phenomenal in helping us in gathering feedback and reflecting on plans and just things moving forward.
And I commend them as well. Those, one young man in particular reached out directly to me, and he was very, very detailed about what he wanted to see happen. And this is why I love working with the young people because they're so creative and innovative. And if you give them an opportunity and listen to them, they will tell you exactly what they need to be protected. But I want to again commend the entire team for, and I was able to witness what has been happening at Antioch High School. And those are my babies. So I'm so excited that they are doing amazing things, that our young people have stepped up and said, this is what we need. We need you to protect us. And we're listening to them. So I can't thank you and your team enough for being on the ground and providing that extra level, that extra layer of support for the, for the administrators at Antioch High School. I think that, I don't think I had any additional questions. Just wanted to make sure that we were very clear that this is not a situation where we can just say, all right, here it is, we're going to do it, because there is funding considerations that have to be thought through before this thing can happen. So thank you for all of the responses to the many questions that have come up and getting us the answers that we needed. So I do appreciate that.
Board member Taylor, and then board member Elrod.
Thank you, Chair. At the battle, first, I just want to thank you for just all the work that you've done to get us to this point. I think the level of research that you've done even over the years around this topic and this issue, and being able to inform us about the pros and cons of each part of this decision, I've just been very impressed with that. And so I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing around this. And I also just want to mention that we've had a lot of feedback from the community. They have definitely made their voices heard. And, and so I'm thankful that we have taken some of those concerns into consideration. And, and your level of preparation and being able to answer the questions tonight shows that you've been connected in that way. And so thank you for that. So I have two questions. They kind of play off of each other. But the first one is just related to the importance of families, our students and their families understanding how serious this is, and what happens if a weapon is found. And so if you can just kind of talk about just the high level, what happens when a weapon is found and how is that treated in our schools?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they're prohibited from our campuses and from our schools. And you know, there have been a number of occasions where I personally sent out district wide communications, and our principals have, and our teachers have as well. And so, I mean, it really is a plea to our families, to the adults in our students' lives, to pay attention. It's okay to check backpacks. It's okay to know what is being posted on social media. It's okay to know the friends that they're hanging, it's okay. And we need every adult in this community. I mean, you know, we can reflect, I'm, I'm not that old, but we, we've talked about the village, right, that's necessary, parent or not, just community leaders caring for our students, caring about the actions that they display because there are serious consequences. Having a weapon on our campus to this degree that we're talking about tonight could lead to, right, expulsion from our schools and detention in, in our juvenile detention center. And so we know that that has lasting impact on our students. And you know, one bad decision can really change the trajectory of our students, particularly one that is of this significance. We have lots of layers of supports in place. We, we, we do searches, we do threat assessments, we provide supports, we do all the things that are required of us, and we're not going to stop. It's about continuous improvement. If there are other things that we can layer in, we will. We don't take anything off the table. But that, you know, having a weapon of this nature that we've been talking about here that can cause harm to anyone does have significant consequences that can lead up to expulsion from school and again, and arrest.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, what efforts are being made to educate the community about these issues and additional measures that the community can take to protect the students? And how can we as board members support you in that?
Yeah, this has been an ongoing conversation. We have worked closely with MMPD in particular. We've worked here at the board. We've pushed locking up weapons and, and lock boxes. And we've, we've reinforced the message we've talked about while threats are unacceptable in our world today. We take those matters seriously. So I think we can continue to amplify. You know, there, there was a day and time where the superintendent did not have to send out wholesale messages like that to the community. But when you see the continued display of these behaviors, you have to, because it's important for every family, every student to understand the message. Our student parent handbook has been a significant acceleration in this work. It's what has forced us to really lay out what the expectations are from year to year, because we want to be proactive and we want to be supportive so that we're not dealing with these types of infractions in, in our school building. But it will take partnership from the board across the entire district into the community, MMPD as well, other elected officials to help us amplify the message. And ultimately, we all have to continue to advocate for changes in the law that allow for these types of items to be in the hands of children. We have to continue to advocate, and we cannot be distracted by what we think can't happen. We have to continue to push for the change we know we need to see to protect our children and our educators in our schools. Schools should be safe places for children and for educators. They should be. They deserve to be safe places for everyone. And so there are a number of things that we can control. There are a lot of things we can't. And it will take the community, it will take our leaders at every level to continue to push for the change we need to see in our community. What we often are responding to are all the things from the community that show up in our schools. And so without togetherness, without a committed effort, without a message, like, we're going to continue to see this exist, not just here, but across this country. And so we are open to those partnerships. We're open to the advocacy. I know that we have advocacy chair and committee right here on the board. We've got to keep pushing for the change we want to see because we don't write the laws. This board doesn't write the laws. And so that help would be invaluable to us really making significant improvements and change in this space.
Well, I got your back. I'm with you, and I appreciate you. And I know that that's something that I'm committed to working on with you and with the community as whole.
Thank you, board member Taylor. I'm going to go to, I misspoke to member Hara Block since he hasn't spoke, and then we'll go to our second round of, of speakers.
I'm not even sure I want to cover this now that Dr. Battle just did it so eloquently. But the things that Dr. Battle just said were the things I wanted to actually address. A number of us have been repeatedly to the state legislature over many years, asking for changes to our gun laws, and specifically around safe storage. And I just want to read a couple of statistics, statistics off from the police department's website, because I want to emphasize that we need help in this. We are going to do the things we need to do. We're going to keep layering in what we need to layer in. We're going to look at mental health. We're going to do all of these things. And I'm grateful to you, Dr. Battle, and your team for this really extensive presentation, and to my colleagues for what were, what have been great questions. In the last three years, 3,156 firearms have been stolen in Nashville. Of that, 2,123 of them, 67% have been stolen out of motor vehicles. Those are guns that potentially end up in our schools. But even more significantly, those are guns that are being used in our community to commit acts of violence regularly. And so this is an enormous problem. And I appreciate everything that the school district and Dr. Battle and her team and our educators and everyone is doing to try and help with the problem that we need help with. We need leadership at the state level. We need leadership at the national level because we cannot change those laws. Safe storage is a really basic and easy thing to do. And requiring people to report their firearms when they're stolen is not a difficult thing to do. And it is a thing that would really help us. So that's not a question. It's just a bunch of statements. And I appreciate all of this information. It has been very helpful in something that feels very hard to want to do. Dr. Battle said it well when she sent this to parents last week. To be clear, I wish we lived in a world where schools could remain open and free from the fear of gun violence. We'll do our part, but we all need to do our part. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Elrod.
Thank you. If you're interested in safe storage information, it's inside of our student handbook. If you do not have a copy of that, it's on our website. And I appreciate us doing that a few years ago. It was something I pushed really hard for, and we were the first school system in the state of Tennessee to include that information. And so I'm really proud of us for doing that, because it helps, of course, with intentional, but also unintentional deaths of not just students, but all members of families. As a gun owner, safe storage is incredibly important. I come from a long line of gun owners, and we all have to do safe storage. So yes, thank you. My question is really a clarifying question. I appreciate the note that we're doing it in more than our 12 comprehensive high schools. I can't remember the number you gave, but I just want to clarify that that number included like our alternative learning centers and magnet schools, but it's MMPS schools.
That's correct. Our district run schools is what we're planning for at this point.
Got it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Nabata McKinney.
So when I lost track with my questioning, Robert, board member Taylor, and board member Block had my back. So one of the things that we constantly talk about is what happens in society boils up into our schools. And the idea that this has caused tragedy and death within our school is, is, I can't even find the words to say. This is a community issue, and we have got to get on top of the community issue. We can do all that we can to increase safety and security within our schools, but the community has got to come together to help us with this issue. Students do not get guns inside of schools. They're bringing them in. And we have got to address that issue as a community. Safe storage is a first start in making sure that we are doing it and whatever other things that we need to do. So I am imploring those who are listening, those who are in the community, we have got to work on this issue around access to guns. From our own homes into our communities, we have got to work together as a community to address this. It is a crisis. It is a pandemic in its own words. Our MMPD has talked about it until they're blue in the face. And I don't know how often we have to say this, but we have really, really, really need to work together to ensure that we are addressing this issue. And we will do all that we can, but there is always, no matter how much we harden schools, there's always a possibility, if we're not working together between our schools and our community, to address this together. So I implore you and invite you to work with us together to address this issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to close out the discussion in saying that we, this has been less than a month since this has happened. I know there was a call from the community for us to act more quickly and with an extreme sense of urgency. And our first priority were our children. We had a crisis, and we dealt with that crisis. After we dealt with the crisis, we had to stabilize. And we stabilized our community and our children. And then we wanted to have this discussion. This is only the second meeting out since January 22nd, so we can have this type of discussion. We have had this discussion for over an hour, almost an hour and 15 minutes. We wanted to be a thoughtful, sober, intelligent, heartfelt discussion. We did not want to make decisions out of emotion. And we want to make sure that Dr. Battle and her team had the time and energy to give thoughtful information to us as a board and to the community. And I wanted us to be mindful of that. We take our job seriously. We're not just a legislative, legislative body. We make policy, but we do not make laws. We often implement the laws or restricted by the laws that we are held to. And so to the community, I hope you really sit and take in this debate, the questions that were asked, the comments that were made, that they were thought, done with thoughtful, thoughtfulness and intelligence, with cooperation and with teamwork and with leadership, and understanding that we, we understand, we will do our part to protect our children. We will lead our children. We will protect our children. But as my colleague says, it takes, and Dr. Battle said, it takes a village. What happens in a community will bubble up in our schools. And so we need the community to come out and help. We need a community to take an active part. And that means work for MMPD. I challenge you to become a resource officer. I challenge you to be a security officer. I challenge you to be a support staff, to not sit in the arena and just have conversations without joining us in protecting our kids. It takes a community. It takes a village. We will do our part. We accepted this responsibility when we were elected. We are not shying away from it. We're taking it full-throated, having a full-throated discussions with it. But we also have to help with 80,000 students. Parents, community members, as I said, I'm a unicorn. I do not have a child, but I check on the children around me. Every day, I work from home. I watch the students go onto the buses for elementary and for middle school every morning and every afternoon. They know my face, but I make sure that the parent that's sitting in front of my driveway, who watches her kid get on the bus, I watch too, just to give an extra set of eyes. When the kids are walking on their cell phones from the bus to their, to their condos, I watch them until they're out of my eyesight. I don't do it because I, they're not my child, but they are part of my community. And this is what we need from everyone, from council members, from former school board members, to parents, to community members. Get involved. It takes the community to do this. We understand the impact. We understand the loss of innocent lives, and we're trying to prevent it. We've had 11 layers of security done before this incident. We learned from Covenant. We learned from Uvalde. We learned from Park Avenue. We learned from my generation of Columbine. This is not something that we didn't think passively by the light of night, by the back of our name, hand. This has been a constant thoughtful aspect. When we have talked about weapons and metal detectors before, the conversation came up, will they become obsolete because of the materials that can be happened and what weapons can be bring? We want to make sure we were doing, be a good steward of our taxpayers' dollars, but also being effective and being innovative into the future. So I would like to say to the community, we are having this discussion here. We're doing it transparently. We're having thoughtfully. We are taking our time. This meeting is not being rushed to make sure we are doing right, more importantly, by our children than by our staff, who work in those schools to protect their children every day. And as you'll see the investigation come out, we can't do everything and everything. We try, but we have a limited amount of staff. This is where we need the community to come in. And when you see something, say something. If you notice something, say something. Because it takes all of us to protect our 80,000 kids. So I just want to be mindful to the community that we hear you. We are making sure we are responding to you. We take it seriously, and we are going to continue to take it seriously. responding to you, we take it seriously, and we are going to continue to take it seriously. You see the thoughtfulness, the emotion of my colleagues here, who are actually making this as parents, as community people, and also just as guardians of our school system. So I really just want to close our discussion on that thought, that we are hearing every voices. I want to thank our student, student, student school board members. This is why we have student school board members. They're asking the questions that implement them every single day, because our two school board members are one that can be affected by it every day. We come in here twice a month, but they go into their schools over 180 days. And we want to make sure their voice is heard, they're comfortable with it, and that we bring stability into it, that we're not rushing into it, we're not pushing something onto our children without being thoughtful in their input and making sure that we're taking care of their emotional health and their physical health is a twofold aspect. And we just can't rush in and harden our schools and not think it has an impact. We want to do it in a timely manner, but I just wanted to make sure that this is not just a one-off thing. We have been doing it. So to the community, continue to watch our school board meetings, continue to read the minutes, continue to not hear everything you hear on the news, who are sensationalizing this topic, to make more clicks and more videos and need to get and increase their ratings. We have been talking about this time and time and time again. This is not the first discussion this has had, we've had this for years, and I'm in my second term, and this is the several times we've had a discussion like this. So I just want to thank my colleagues for this thoughtful discussion, for the questions you ask, and for bringing your intelligence and also bringing your hearts into discussion to make sure that we're protecting our children and our staff so we can provide our first part of education. That is our primary and first goal, is to be educators. And like Dr. Battle said, every school should be open and free. Unfortunately, times have changed, and we have to tighten that circle and that protection around our children, but we will do our best to make sure our schools are safe places for our kids to learn, to be creative, and to be free. And we will try to protect our lives, their lives to the best, to our ability and understanding that we take full responsibility to make sure that happens in a thoughtful and serious way. Now, onto that, we will go on to public participation.
Nope.
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't.
We'll now go on to direct, we're going to pub participation. We will wait for the list to be displayed. All right, we will begin with Erin Perry. Erin Perry.
I am Joyce.
You can pull it down, so you don't have to go in toes. There you go.
It's better?
Yes.
Like, I am Joyce Perkins, and I live in District Six, and Ms. Mays is our representative, and I know several people on the board, so I'm nervous, but like, I just have to hear some of the things, and I appreciate what everybody has done, but like, I've heard some things that really caught my attention, too. It is the community to, in terms of what is going on, and I have two children, they've gone through, they came, they were juniors in middle school and then high school here, and my son just turned 60, and I'm still 21. And I graduated TSU in 1980 in psychology. I believe and know that everyone in this room is heartbroken with what happened at Antioch High School on January 22nd. Every single shooting in this city and state and country, I'm sure that we all really care, and I am here to call for action. And I heard that it's going to take time, I heard what was said, I listened carefully, but I'm really calling for metal detectors, and I'm also calling for a boycott, a boycott from parents and children until they are in the schools. It's going to take too long to just wait for everything to be approved. I get scared that things are going to come from Mexico and China and we'll never get them. I understand that this is more than just metal detectors, I know it's mental health, I know it's drug and alcohol. I know we have two schools, I wanted to say, I'm aware of, okay, but just the two minutes is really hard to just do it all, but like, we need, we need the action.
Thank you. And you also can email your comments, too, to the board, if you haven't finished your thought. Scott Davis.
Hello, I'm Dr. Scott Davis. I have a PhD in educational leadership, K-12, with a focus of school safety. One Nashville organization asked me to host a community meeting to talk about school safety. I made 20 copies of this for the board, so that you can see the recommendations we had. One was see something, say something. We're doing some type of reward system for students or parents that see online statements and things, and do screenshots or turn it in, much like Crime Stoppers, so that they can speak immediately and encourage them to see something, say something. One is clear backpacks, and some of the school, bus drivers that showed up at our meetings that clear backpacks, they can help them be able to keep the weapons out on the front end, prevention, before they get on the bus. SROs, trying to rotate the few elementary SROs we have through our elementary schools, assign them possibly six, spend at least an hour every two days there, checking doors, being a presence in the community. With the AI technology Evolve, and all the research I did, it said metal detection system, it said weapon detection system, it didn't specifically say metal detectors. There's a lot of concern in the community that weapon detection system versus metal detector is different, it's not a magnetometer, it doesn't actually detect metal. I do not work with Evolve, but there were some of the questions that came up. In conjunction of having a comprehensive safety plan, multi-layered, that would be one thing that would be recommended, is if the AI software does detect metals and how that is, is done as opposed to metal detectors. The other concerns are the speed at which it's implemented. Also attached a number of articles about the AI and some of the things like, probably a great question about the rate of detection, okay? But also was the sensitivity settings on the, on the system. And one of the recent, most recent that just happened this month, February 3rd of 2025 in Baton Rouge, one of the systems, the staff actually changed the sensitivity detections and a weapon got through. So those are the concerns and recommendations. Like I said, I provided 20 copies of this for you to look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we received the copies. Jonathan Vanderbilt.
If only I had Vanderbilt money. I'm Jonathan Vandenberg. I am a voter in Member Young's district, which I think is District One, but the numbers get mixed up. Right, so I have a kid at Warner, who's another district, which is maybe District One, and another kid at Head. So I've got lots of people I love here. I want to just start out with gratitude. Every time I interact with the school district, drop off in the morning, go to a performance at Warner, get a newsletter from a principal, I'm really impressed and overwhelmed sometimes by the care and the expertise that goes into taking care of my kids every day. And it's my first board meeting, but I'm feeling that same feeling, so a lot of gratitude. That being said, I am opposed to the weapons detector system. I think the costs outweigh the benefits. It's been a great discussion, I'm not going to go through it again. I think, in my case, the benefit that I don't really account for is, I think it significantly reduces the fear that people feel. It doesn't do that for me. I think the way my brain works, it's not really reducing danger, there's lots of ways that a person who's determined to do harm can get around a weapon detection system. But I ask my own kids, what do you think about it? And they say, yeah, that'd be great. So, you know, it's my opinion, I, I totally respect the leadership of the board and Dr. Battle, so I can live with it, I'll be at peace with it if it goes through, but I would like to take the opportunity to think about those aspirational items, not to let this $5 million be the end of it, like, we, we dealt with it, we solved it. I spent a lot of time trying to figure out what to say today and came across this concept of threat assessment, behavioral threat assessment. I know it was mentioned that there is a threat assessment team. I have never heard of it before as a parent in the district. I know maybe it's hard to talk about because you've got individual students with privacy rights. I also think it might have a bad reputation because it was a requirement imposed on us by the state legislature, bless their hearts, but I think that is the recognized best practice to prevent incidents like this going forward, is to develop a threat assessment program that incorporates the whole community, that sees something, say something, but in a structured way. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Leland Evans.
Good afternoon, everyone. Leland Evans, District Six. Two weeks ago, I stood before you all to advocate on behalf of over 2,500 parents, students, community leaders, to say that we want metal detectors, now weapons detection systems across all MNPS. Last week, Mayor Freddie O'Connell made similar statements, saying, quote, "Our immediate responsibility is to protect students and staff. This investment is a necessary step to address the threats we face." Chairwoman Player, you said something very similar as well, quote, "As school board, we are committed to providing the tools and resources needed to protect our students against another tragic situation like we experienced at Antioch High School." It sounds like we're all on the same page in our words, but you all have the opportunity to take action today. Today, you will be voting to either protect lives or point fingers. You have the opportunity to vote whether you will save students or you will save money. Before you vote, I would love to know, how many of you have experienced firsthand gun violence? Because the students at Antioch High School have, and I have as well. In 2012, my brother was shot, and I know what it feels like to watch as someone you love bleed. I know what it feels like to have to cover his blood wound, his gunshot wound. I know what it's like to see someone get rushed off in an ambulance and wonder if you will make it to the hospital and if they will be alive when you get there. We need to make the next steps to expand this pilot program to all schools. I know and trust that you all will do that. And to the point of anyone who's asking about the money, you can ask any parent, how much are they willing to spend to save their children's life? And I guarantee you, they'll tell you every penny. One thing that we're not asking you all to do is come up with the money, because that's not your job. We're asking you to tell city council that you want these, because the people and the students and the parents are saying they want them. So don't worry about that. We, as the community, I hear you, Chairwoman Player, it is the community, we will show up, we will back you all. We will go to city council and tell them that we need, we need this funding. We ask that you vote in favor of expanding the pilot program.
Thank you. That's the end of public participation. Now we will go on and vote on the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with 1B8 integration system being removed from that consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and approve by Chairmember Mays and seconded by Vice Chair Nabah McKinnney. All in favor of the consent agenda, raise your hand. It is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you very much. Now I entertain a motion to consider the contract of system integration. Is there a motion? Been motioned by, been moved by Member Young, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Taylor. All right, I think we did our discussion during Director's Report, so we'll move on to a vote. Board members, if you please indulge my privilege, I will call for a roll call vote, please. Dr. Sevier, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor votes aye.
Hi.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Young votes aye. Vice Chair Nabah McKinnney?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Ms. Fane?
Aye.
Ms. Fane votes aye. Ms. Mays?
Aye.
Ms. Mays votes aye. Ms. O'Hara Block?
Aye.
Ms. O'Hara Block votes aye. And Ms. Tyler?
Aye.
Ms. Tyler votes aye. And Chair Player?
Aye.
Chair Player votes aye. Madam Chair, nine ayes.
All right, the, the contract for system integration passes unanimously, 9-0. Now we'll move on to board reports. I will hand it over to my colleague Chair Mays to give a brief report on the state legislature legislative day with the Tennessee School Board Association.
Thank you, Chair. So I just attended the Tennessee School Boards Association Legislative and Legal Institute Conference that wrapped up today, and I wanted to just give a quick report to my colleagues. There are currently, and, and before I get into that, let me just say for Chair Player, you mentioned that this is a community, we need all of our community members. This is where you can get on board and start helping to my community. We need you as advocates on the Hill. As of the deadline for filing bills, we have currently over 240 bills that have been filed related to K-12 education, and we are going to need everyone's help to make sure that we are reviewing and attempting to defeat any negative bills that will, any bills that will negatively impact our districts and our, our children. There were a couple of bills that, well, one in particular that I wanted to bring attention to, to this Board of Education, and let me pull that information very quickly, I had it up, I do apologize. It is related to, I had it right here. So it's related to school board elections, and that's always one that we want to make sure that we are keeping our eye on. Basically, what happens, this is Senate Bill 342, House Bill 416. As introduced, it requires school board members to be elected at the same election beginning in 2028. So basically, if this bill passes, that starting in 2028, every single school board member would have to run for election or reelection at the same time. My concern with this, and this is a bill that TSBA vehemently opposes, my concern with this is that if that were to occur, the possibility of a 100% turnover of a school board every four years is absolute, every two years, excuse me, is absolutely something that could occur. And you lose knowledge of your school boards, and additionally, the threat of having an administration turnover is, it goes up significantly, because you don't necessarily, with new school board members who don't know the system, who don't understand, could potentially create a situation where they are trying to turn over an administration, which could lead to a decline in academic success. So that's a, that's a big one that is concerning. There are several bills that, as I said, that TSBA is opposing. I have a list that I will get out to all of my colleagues, and we are also going to be getting another Metro Schools Day on the Hill date in order for our parent advocates and our school board members to join me in talking to legislators about some of these bills, and hopefully we can talk them off the ledge, because some of these are just ridiculous. There are some that I think would be potentially halfway decent bills, but the ones that, that we're looking at right now that we might oppose could be detrimental to our school district, and I want to make sure that we are keeping our eye on that. But I will be sending out additional information to all of our school board members about these particular bills and what we need to do to make sure that this, try our very best, you know, with the super majority being GOP, the likelihood of us making a dent is small, but there is always a chance. So I want to make sure that we are continuing to voice our concerns and making sure that the folks that are making the decisions know that this is not going to work out well for any of our children, and these are statewide bills, so if it impacts Nashville, it's going to impact every county in the state of Tennessee, so. But that's just a quick update on where we are right now, so thank you.
Thank you. Board Member O'Hara Block?
Thank you. We have, before our next board meeting, we will have our semi-annual review of Dr. Battle's evaluation and our formative feedback that we give, so I will be sending all of you tomorrow the report that you can use to then enter your feedback into the system so that we can then summarize, and I'd love to be able to have that back by next Thursday, the 20th, so I'll put all of that in an email to you all, but please be looking out for it, and please get it done, because I'm not a fan of harassing you, but I certainly will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then one announcement, we, we will not have a board meeting on March 11th due to spring break, so March 11th, there will not be a board meeting due to spring break. Be no further business, our meeting's adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.